Items are miscellaneous. Actually, there are a number of them.
Well, I've created issues.
Lisa created an issue?
Of course.
We have until seven.
Well, I'm told I have to stop a little bit before to let the audience speak, so I will do that. Because I tend to go on too long. So I'll let you guys speak.
I got this.
The first thing I wanted to talk about is the Pines.
Yes.
I've been told I'm not supposed to call it the Fossil House. The Pines House is the house at the end of -- so if you're on McFarland, it's straight across at the intersection of McFarland and Old Baltimore Pike. And it's where the hotel is now. And there's the old Underground Railroad House there. Does everybody know where I'm at?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So, the owner of that property hasn't done anything to rehab it. It's just been sitting in the tear-eating. So the supervisors and I met with our building inspector. And the building inspector met with the owner of the house and Sarah Meadows from our historic commission. The owner permitted the township to do a estimate of the house to see how much it would cost to rehab it. The owner's willing to give the house away to any -- no, he's not willing to rehab it and give it away. But he would be willing to give it to somebody if they wanted to rehab it. So the supervisors directed the building inspector to get estimates on how much it would cost to rehab it. So he's been working with an architect, Brackstone Architects, Todd Brackstone. And they went in and they looked at the house. And now we have a quote on the services to estimate the cost to rehab it. So the scope of the services is that Phase One, they would do an existing building measure-up, which would consist of photographing the structure interior and exterior, measuring all building elements interior and exterior, including visible structural sizes and configurations. The data would be put on CAD drawings and made available. And then, once these documents are complete, they can be used for further studies. That's Phase One. Phase Two is a structural evaluation, which means they would inspect the conditions of all areas of the building to determine areas which are structurally unsound or that may become unsound soon. There would be digital images of these areas. They would identify areas and conditions of structural concern. They would recommend structural repair on the building. They would recommend repairs, replacement, and provide sketches for resolving those repairs and replacements. And during their initial walkthrough to foundation-related areas at the building's perimeters, they noted them. And they may require further investigation, including demolition and/or excavation for evaluation. They would provide a recap of their findings and recommendations in report format. The carpet removal would be done before their inspection. A carpenter handyman would be available to work with them on-site during their inspection, demolition, or excavation for evaluation. And they will provide access to look at the roof. That's Phase Two. And the cost -- let me get to the cost of this. Let me get one out of my crossbow. Okay, Phase One would be $3,600. And Phase Two would be $3,200 plus reimbursable expenses.
Last week, Steve Silver, Art Menardon, and I went through the house quite thoroughly. Art was there to see it, which he hadn't done before. And I said, "Have I seen it before?" And we went down into the basement. I think somebody got it by a muddy foot down there.
I couldn't hear you. Mike, he got it what?
A muddy foot.
Oh, okay.
He stepped in mud.
I thought it was bloody, but that's --
Well, maybe there's some there. And afterwards, Art said that that house, to make it into something that we still don't know what it would be economic, would cost just a bare minimum to get it habitable, at least a quarter of a million dollars, which would require all the ADA requirements, new services of electric and water. The heat is -- there are some room heat, electric heaters. It's really extremely difficult to get that work done. Not that it could not be done, and it certainly can. But nobody has been able to come up with a use for that house. The first thing that comes to mind is offices. Well, you may have to spend certainly a minimum of a million, and I wouldn't be surprised that the bill would go to 2 million. You might stick at a million for a moment. And that's my opinion. And Art said he wouldn't guess. Then what are you going to do with that alleged office space? Because it's an old house. And it's not laid out for offices. And you'd have trouble renting it. You'd have to rent it for a great deal to cover that kind of at least a quarter of a million dollar investment. And it certainly would be more than that. I've come to the conclusion, and Art has said that's a fair conclusion, that it has no economic value. And therefore, it should be demolished and made into something, if it's possible, that could have economic value. There is the Underground Railroad. Though that's not been verified, and it's not a historic structure, that is still there. Perhaps something could be preserved after the superstructure is removed and something that could be put over the top of it to either see down there and have lighting down there. But to go down those steps is pretty tough. So I can't see any value in trying to require the owner to spend a great deal of money to wind up with something that is probably not usable. And I would suggest that we -- if he comes in with a demolition permit, that it be approved. Tom?
Have you talked to the courts? I know a while back, they were interested in moving possibly out of the borough.
To who?
The court.
Court.
Oh, the court.
No, they have not.
Well, you remember, Tim McGrawy was trying to get the court to move out to his property. I don't know whatever happened to that.
It's possible that that could be something new could be built there for that purpose and preserve the Underground Railroad as it is. And that's something that can be looked at. But that's really mostly all I have to say.
Well, in 1968, my wife and I looked at that property with eight acres, but they wanted $35,000 for it.
Wow. But in this scheme of things, for 1968, even if you didn't do Phase One, because I -- as I reviewed Phase One, I think a lot of Phase One was already done when the development was done there, as far as documenting that house. But maybe not to the extent it needed. But for the cost, I mean, isn't it worth exploring it to see? Because the owner wouldn't be paying to rehab it if somebody else was willing to rehab it.
Particularly if the owner wants to give it away.
Is there any concept that an archaeologist is --
Weiss would --
Involved in the initial thing, just to try to verify?
Apparently, that has been attempted to verify, the Underground Railroad. And I don't think it -- I don't think there is enough information to prove it. They say it was possible. Yeah. It could have been just a roof cellar.
Uh-huh, right.
Bill?
Yes, how much land is around that and goes with this old house?
I don't know right now.
It's not a separate parcel. It's part of the entire development. But in some --
No, it's separate.
It is a separate -- yeah.
He sold to someone the right to build a medical office there. And that sign has been on his sign out front. Medical office.
Well, let's be clear. We have the owner right here. So we could ask him.
I don't know how much land is there. I think that we've used up, you know, I mean, I think that, you know, there's certain open space requirements that we know we're pretty much at the limit for. You know, as it relates to the house and the questions that you asked, I mean, there's a lot of legend. And, you know, we had some misfortune in it when we had a tenant in there who moved out. And when we brought on the new property manager, he didn't get in there and drain the pipes and turn off the water a couple of years ago. So the pipes broke. And, you know, we've sealed up the house pretty much. People break into it. They're interested in going down the basement, looking and seeing what's going on. And so, you know, it's not real as he was saying, like Mike was saying. You know, the way the house is configured, it's really not something that's workable in terms of economic value. The economic value is the land and starting over. So that's where the value of it is. There are a lot of individuals in the community who are, you know, quite upset, that want to see the house restored, you know, would like to see things done to the house. But, you know, there's really not much that can be done. There's no real economic, you know, program of work. You know, I'm certainly willing to sell the house. I'm willing, you know, in a very nominal amount. However, if I did sell the house, I want them to do something. You know, I want them to commit, you know, to the 300,000, 400,000, 500,000, or 600,000 that it would take to restore it. You know, it's, you know, I don't want -- I own the contiguous properties as well. And to sell it to someone and have it stay as it is is not something that I want to do. I have some experience with this. I lived in Wilmington. And next door to my house is Gibraltar, which was owned by the DuPonts. And it was given to Preservation Delaware. And Preservation Delaware didn't have the capital to do anything with it. So the roof is falling in, and all these horrible things are happening there that, you know, will happen at this house if there's not an economic commitment to restore it and bring it back. So if the town is interested in, you know, if it's worth 300,000, and the town's willing to buy it for 100,000, you know, I'll sell it to the town. You got -- I'm not worried about what you'll do. But if there's any not-for-profit group that wants to take it over or people who want to have it, well, they have to have the capital to fix it and not just have it sit the way that it is. And under those circumstances, we'd be glad to do it.
Yes, we don't want to get in the same situation that we did with Longwood demolishing some of those historic homes.
Certainly do not.
And the issues against demolition for those properties were brought up by Chester County Historical. In fact, our own historical group agreed with demolition. Shouldn't we run this by someone so we don't run into this argumentative thing? I agree with it. If it's in this situation, it is. No one's going to restore it except to let it stay as a bunch of bricks and blocks or whatever. But why get into a big argument about this thing at a later date? And from the county Historical.
Well, one of the things that -- it's a good comment. I just want to make, say two things. Number one, the house is not on the historic record. And number two, a historic registry. And number two, it has multiple additions to it, you know, from side to side. It hasn't been preserved in its original state. So if there is, as it relates to historic value, you know, I guess that's in the eyes of the beholder, the perception of the people. And but it's not on a historic register.
Well, if you get to the Board of Supervisors meeting a little later this month, you can make a formal proposal to demolish the place. The newspapers will be here. The word will get out. And see who comes out of the woods to say, "I don't like that."
Bill? I don't have any facts to deal with specifically, but I thought I heard when the Fairfield Inn was going up that there was something in the sale agreement to protect this old house.
No, that's not the case. I mean, we've always, hey, we would have liked to seen it, you know, somebody have some interest in it for office space. And restore it to office space and have it have some, you know, minimal value. But the problem is, when you get right down to the use of it and the condition of it, you've got a Model T. You restore the Model T, you've still got a Model T. And the professionals who would want, you know, lawyers or doctors or whoever would, you know, might want to have it or have the money that would take to restore it and make it work, are interested in having, you know, Class A space or spaces more functional. And there's a lot of open space in this area that's for lease at a relatively good price because the supply exceeds the demand for office space. So if you were moving in there and you have a special interest.
If you're going in there, it's a -- The submission of a demolition permit to bring it into the public eye.
And I can tell you, it's going to be more controversial than Longwood Gardens.
It'll be more controversial?
Absolutely. That's why I just feel it. It's just my opinion that we should at least find out what we're working, dealing with before the house gets demolished.
I have to support Lisa in that. I think that it is, with all due respect to the chairman, I think that it makes lots of sense to do the evaluations that are being asked for here as a beginning. I think that we ought to have our historic commission do a property search on it, an historic review of its history so we have some idea of what we're talking about. I've looked into this over a period of time. And I understand that there was a group out of Lancaster that expressed an interest in the property, a nonprofit. I don't know why that had not been followed up or had been completed. But I know that there are nonprofits that would be interested in that. I think that there are a lot of different possibilities that we could consider. But at this point, it's a shot in the dark because we don't even know whether it's structurally sound or ready to fall down or what. Because the work to do that has not properly been completed. Hence, the reason for this proposal. So I think that, and my goodness, it's nominal. $6,800 to do that?
Both phases.
Yeah, combined, combined.
I barely know see the need for Phase One, though.
We don't need detailed drawings if we're going to knock it down eventually. But I do, I would support doing Phase Two.
Bob Listerman, Planning Commission, and also part of the team that, the group, I should say at least, that looked at the Longwood demolition. I felt that the biggest weakness those that wanted to preserve it had is that they had no alternative that they could support. So I agree with Mr. Silver that if there's going to be opposition to this, I think one of the things we should press is that, do they have a plan? And are they in a position to carry it out? It should not be the township's burden just because they want it to be there. And I would just stand, you know, with that thought in mind, that Mr. Silver's got a great point. He's not, he's almost, it's like Longwood Gardens all over. Good day to go. And I know we have people on the Planning Commission who are going to be more upset about this one than the Longwood. So I would think that would be something we have to -- I'm actually agreeing with all the alternative. I'm not throwing any alternative under the bus. I will make a point, though, is that the demolition process, and what you're doing makes sense. You're front-ending the demolition process. Normally, we do this within the process. So if you want to front-end it, all you want to help, to help discourage those that would be against the idea, I'm all for that.
Or encourage them.
Or encourage them.
Because they might go out and find somebody.
If they, you know, I think Mr. Silver is, on the record, is saying he doesn't care, other than the fact that he doesn't want to have this light on his property for a lot of good reasons.
If it's going to be an eye sore, it's going to be my eye sore. Because I want to put, I have the property next to it. But if somebody wants to come in there and invest money into it and preserve it, like the Historic Society, or I welcome the names of these not-for-profits from Lancaster, you know, who are interested. I've never heard from them myself to my knowledge. So if you know who they are, I'd take the name tonight and call them tomorrow.
I have contact on it. I'm waiting for the details to come in to me.
So it's not something that's been directed to me previously that you know?
As far as I know, it was not directed to you. And frankly, I'm not sure how far it went. So that's, I'm trying to find those facts out.
John, hey, speaking from the Planning Commission standpoint, I agree with both Lisa and Bob Listerman. And one of my suggestions is that we go through an evaluation process. And I think because of the ordinance, we're going to have to go through the Planning Commission process. But I think one thing that would be helpful in this whole thing is to set out a plan, that is, with an end date. So we can say if, you know, if no one's come forward, and I think you make a very valid point. You want somebody with some deep pockets to make it a success.
Right.
They don't come forward by a certain date, certainly, then you set it aside. Because it's unreasonable to ask you to wait indefinitely.
Right. You know, what I would like to do, I mean, I agree with you that this is going to, just from what I read about myself on the Internet, that this is going to be worse than Longwood.
I agree.
So, you know, and so if I'm going to, you know, if I'm going to suffer this on the Internet, I may as well own it and live it. You know, I may as well actually do it. So, which I haven't done yet. But I, to be honest with you, I would like to file the demolition permit and get it done. And if people, if there's some, I don't have to tear it. I presume after I get the demolition permit, I've got a year or two years or some period of time to do it. And so, you know, I want to start my process. Because I know how this Planning Commission, the planning body is. It takes time to get through. The wheels turn very, very, very slow. And there's next meeting, and there's next meeting, and there's next meeting.
No, one thing, it's consistent with what you just said. If you file the demolition permit next week, but say your intention is, if it's not resolved in a way agreeable to you in nine months, you want to act upon it.
Well, we have a clock of nine days, don't we?
Yeah, but go beyond that to let all these things come out of the woodwork. And, you know, I see two things. One is, it'd be very unusual for a nonprofit that has deep pockets, but it's possible. Or municipal use. And, you know, so far, as Mike said, we haven't identified any
I can think of a couple.
Good municipal use.
A police department? Meeting rooms?
It's possible, yeah, it's possible.
Let me say this.
Let me just add to it.
I'll try myself.
I'm thinking of other examples. Chatsworth Township got and restored and made it their township building. That worked out successful. But they held that building for, I don't know, 30, 40 years. I don't know the name. Penn Township, maybe? Bought the Red, what's the name of it?
Red Rose Inn.
Red Rose Inn. Oh, my gosh. They got problems.
Well, the borough moved into --
On the borough, bottom, oh, yeah.
And they're very unhappy with that.
I would, yeah. I've had some meetings there. They're not good. So anyway, a lot, I think we just need enough time and let all this excitement go. And then it'll calm down. And when you reach an end date, you can act. That's what I do.
I'd like to say one more thing. Let's say that you decided that you wanted it to be a police station or some building. I really don't think that the building is functional for it. I think you spent so much money trying to get there that it would kill you. What you would do is, you might put some money into restoring that building partway so it, you know, you could go in it and et cetera. And then you build an addition next to it that would be your police station or whatever purpose you might have for it. But getting that building into some condition that would have commercial use with heavy traffic would be a significant undertaking. And I know you guys have a lot of money, but --
But as soon as, rumor. And as you speak, though, if you'd make a building accessible to the public, it's going to have to go through ADA, it's going to have to have handicaps.
But it's also historic, so it doesn't have all of the regulations a new building has.
That's true. It depends on how much it was historic.
But you say it's historic. What does that mean? If it's not on the register, then I don't know this.
50 years old.
It's 50 years old.
I mean, the original section is 50. Everything's historic, right here?
It's not historic.
How about the concept, what, how would you feel about the concept that perhaps there is some inkling of a prayer that it really does have some link to, you know, the Underground Railroad of the past of Penn, which is an important part of the mystique and heritage of this area? What if it turned out that maybe it could just be reduced to
The basement?
The small part of the house somehow restored, maintained, permanent, you know, made permanent as kind of like an historical mark?
It's economically feasible to do it. You know, it works as a part of a larger program. That's okay with me.
I would like to make a suggestion in line with what Bob said. And a number of things can go in parallel. I suggest that we fund the second phase of the Brackstone proposal. And however long that takes, a demolition permit could be submitted at the same time. And certainly, the Planning Commission will have a lot to say with it. It doesn't necessarily mean that the rigid timescale, that's 90 days for a demolition permit to be acted upon. I think we all are pretty reasonable here. And if the 90 days came up and either this study, the Phase Two is still undergoing, I think we would just -- I think I wouldn't be here for the Board of Supervisors, but I would say that if it came from the Planning Commission recommending one thing or another, the Board of Supervisors doesn't have to act on it. So there's a, it really is an indefinite period of time. But if you start to go forward with things that will cause the issue to close, I think that would satisfy everyone.
Mike, I would be concerned about that, frankly. Because although I understand your feeling that we are all reasonable people here. In fact, the statute says what the statute says. And if it's Longwood Gardens, it's sitting opposite us, and they want that torn down, we were really up against those deadlines. And with all due respect to Mr. Silver, who I'm pleased to meet tonight. I've enjoyed, my mother has enjoyed very much your facility. So it's nice to make the connection. I'll tell her that I did. And I anticipate that he would be respectful of our due diligence in going forward. Nevertheless, if there is somebody that comes along and wants to call that deadline, I don't think, according to the way that was written and the way we've talked about it up to this point, that we have a whole lot to say that you, that we could stop it from going on. So I would suggest as a middle ground is that we do both Phase Two and that we get a Historic Commission report, get those two done, and ask for those to be done in a timely fashion. And then, at that point, we could then start the clock. But I would, if Phase Two and the historic review go on for four months, we're already over the deadline. So I'm concerned about having that open-ended in that fashion.
Yes, Bill? One question. I'm looking at Google Maps here, an outline of the Penn Township. And the Penn Township boundary is awfully close to this property. That's true. Is this township line go?
No. No, but I would say that, you know, we're there because of Penn and Penn Township, because they provided us with sewer, you know, way back in the day.
Was this like a Genardi situation, though, where the Penn Township had responsibility for?
No.
It's all in.
It's all in this room.
That's all right.
I would suggest that, I can't see that, if we can get all we need from Phase Two, I don't know that there's Phase One needed. But let's see what happens with the proposal for cost for Phase One and Two, unless you have that already.
Well, Scott, you and Bob both are saying Phase Two, right?
Yes, Bob suggested Phase Two. And I thought that you had agreed on the Phase Two.
A lot of you suggest Phase One.
I'll move, fund Phase Two. I'll second that. Any comments? All those in favor? Okay, good. I'll second that. Any comments? All those in favor? Okay, good. We have a path forward.
Good.
All right. Now, what's next?
I would like to say one more thing. We all are reasonable people in this room, but if there will be other people coming into this room, we may not be so reasonable as this moves forward. I, you know, I would like, I would like to file the permit. I'd like to move it forward. Doesn't mean we have to tear it down. I don't know, I don't know what that, what that, what that is. But, you know, we would certainly commit to you that, you know, if someone comes forward, you know, and I don't know what we're gonna do. I have a couple of partners. I need to sit, go down, sit down with them and, you know, talk about this. But I do know this, is that we would certainly, you know, commit to you that if we have a demolition permit, we're not going to race up there and tear it down. I mean, if there are people that are interested in it, we're interested in being good citizens. And so if there are people who are, want to invest in it and want to restore it and want to save it, hey, we're all for that. You know, you know, we're all for that.
I don't believe that we have the power to preclude you from filing an application for a demolition permit. I'd hope that you would not, but I don't think we can stop you.
It's gotta be approved.
Yeah, also it has to be approved.
Absolutely.
The risk is that you put us into a 90-day clock, and you could get denied.
Lisa, can he waive, can he grant us an extension?
But I don't want to do that.
No, I mean, at the time of...
But what I'm saying is, is that, you know, I know this will go on and on and on and on and on. And so, you know, I want to, there's some, there's some process, even if you deny me, that I have some appeal. And, and I'm not interested in having any kind of fight over this. I'm interested in going through the process and, and, and being approved, getting done, and sitting, you know, a year, two years, I don't care. But I want to, I want to have a process, you know, and have some end date as opposed to, you know, going back, going on and on and on. And ultimately, you know, if I'm going to be denied, I'm going to be denied, and I want to go through my appeal process, whatever that might be. I, you know, then if I have, if I'm forced to go through all that, then, you know, that, that obviously makes every, that creates a lot of acrimony, you know, that nobody needs. So I'd like to, you know, you know, certainly, you know, have a clear path forward. And, you know, I need to, I don't, I'd like to, I don't know whether I need to come back here and sit down and think about it some more. But no matter what we do, we'll come back and communicate with you about it, and then we'll go from there.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you very much.
I received an update from John and Tom on the bike way, so I just wanted to read it to you guys. All construction bids that were received on August 15th were rejected for the bike way project due to the issue we had with the low, the initial low bid. And they were rejected with the intention to rebid via PennDOT ECMS. Although the highway material lawsuit was served to the township, the action was never filed with the court. Highway material seems to be, seemed to be satisfied and ceased action when the bids were all rejected. PennDOT revised their guidelines to reduce scope to justify the rebid because of the unusual legal issues. Minor adjustments were required for the bid package. Work was done by Gilmore and Urban Engineers. Some costs were incurred to update the bid package. The project is correctly advertised via ECMS, that's PennDOT's site, with a lead date of 10/11/13. There's no material change to the construction schedule. It's still spring and summer of 2014. And hopefully, the rebid will result in lower construction costs than the $800,000 they cost in August.
Good, thank you.
The other issue I wanted to talk to you about is the TI Kennet Richardson run. I sent you a memo on this project, on the, the funding request from the developer. This is the old Chandler property on McFarlane Road. It's being developed. They're still going through the approval process for 36 homes. And so the developer, his first request is that he be permitted, he has to pay a $5,000 per unit fee in lieu, fee, plus he has to pay sewer connection fee of $7,316 per unit. Well, that's what it is currently. I don't know what it'll be when he develops. He is, he's requesting that the supervisors approve him to pay each one of those fees at the time he obtains a building permit for each home, so that he doesn't have to pay it all upfront. That's his one request. His second request, which I received, and I received a memo from Bob Adams on both requests, which I sent to the supervisors. His second request is that he would like to start this project without providing a letter of credit, because Lyons and Hall, the site excavating contractors, will have a financial interest in the project, and they want to do the site work without a letter of credit in place.
Guess so.
The road will not have a wearing course. Stormwater management facilities will be installed at that time. There will be no landscaping. The improvements will only be those that are sufficient to permit Ryan Homes to come in and start the lot, the building of the homes. As soon as the initial improvements are installed, then they would pose security for the remaining improvements. They're, they're saying that we would hold the plan, and the plan wouldn't be released for recording until the security is put in place.
Will Ryan put up a bond on his name and his assets, his corporate assets?
I don't know.
I'm sure the answer is no.
Probably. So from Bob Adams, he feels that this is a reasonable accommodation.
If that's reasonable, I'm sorry, I just, I need clarification. If that's reasonable, why don't we do it everybody? Why are we doing it for them specially?
Yeah.
Well, that's part of the question.
I've never...
Just a little bit, let her finish this.
No, I'm sorry.
I've never heard of this situation ever. So that's why, actually, John Lynch came and told, told me this is what he's going to request. And so I said, well, before I even bring this up to the supervisors, your attorney needs to talk to Bob Adams about this, because I've never heard of this. So they did speak, and this is why we have the memo.
If Bob says it, that's an option for, he can do.
It says that in the MPC Section 509A, there are two methods by which a plan can finally, be finally approved. It provides that no plan shall be approved unless the streets are improved to a passable condition or improved as may be required by the subdivision land development ordinance, and that any walkways, curves, gutters, streetlights, fire hydrants, trees, water mains, sewers, and other improvements are installed. This means that John Lynch would undertake the installation of those improvements without posting security, and that the final plan would not be released for recording until those improvements were installed, and until sufficient security to secure the remaining improvements have been posted.
My first reaction to this, I think we can work something on the, the cost of the payment of the sewer.
The fees are not unusual. For Victoria Gardens, for example, the developer paid per permit. So that's not so unusual. I knew, we'd like them to pay it all upfront, but it has been done upfront. The other one...
Yeah, we've done this before.
I strongly object to not having a letter of credit. Any comments from you both?
I'm, I'm not ready to approve any of that at this point.
John?
This sounds like a very complicated issue, legal, financial, everything else. Is that not why you have that financial advisory? Not the business advisory, but the financial advisory?
I don't think, I don't think that would have anything for them to do. This is, this is whether or not the supervisors want to approve a subdivision to go forward without a letter of credit. And I know that in the past, we've had issues with subdivisions that didn't have enough money in it.
Sounds like trouble unless somebody's playing why not.
We're still propping in Penns Manor.
And it says, he, Bob Adams says that the developer does not feel he'll be able to do the project if he has to put up the letter of credit.
I was just wondering if this alleviates, obviates him from establishing an escrow at the start of the project.
That's, that would be a fallout.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I...
He wouldn't do that until his plans are approved.
Okay, but I think that'd be a mistake not to touch it, not to have the escrow.
I quite agree with you. I might want no part of that idea.
From a, from a layman's standpoint, it seems like he could do everything and then walk away, and we'd have a...
Yeah, another Penns Manor.
Yeah.
No, there wouldn't be any houses.
No, there wouldn't be any houses.
No, there wouldn't be houses, but there would be a mess.
You'd have Victoria Gardens without the roads done. John?
Tom, now, you really haven't mentioned one of the major things, and that's the demolition and the cleanup of the property.
Oh, there's mushroom, yeah.
We have mushroom houses, and we've had a lot of problems over the years with contaminated soils, sewer problems, things like that. We ought to be covered for something if he walks away in the demolition phase of it.
Sounds to me like it's, comes under the thing it doesn't hurt to ask, from their standpoint.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I think you have our sense.
I think I have an answer.
Yeah.
I think I knew the answer before, but, um, John, I'll give you time to talk in a minute. Longwood Fire had a pur...
So what do we resolve? That we're not going forward at this point with this proposal?
Right.
Thank you.
Great.
Longwood Fire had approached the supervisors about, supervisors committing to a lease for a fire truck. That they, Longwood Fire would get the lease, and the supervisors would pay for it. And I think it was at 3.7%. So I did talk, I wanted to report to you guys, that I did talk to our bank. The lowest one was National Penn. They would do a five-year loan for 2.45, or seven for 2.65. It would have to be in the township's name, not Longwood Fires.
And it's a loan, not a lease?
It's a loan, not a lease.
So, so they're buying it, and we're guaranteeing this?
Well, we would guarantee...
They would actually pay it.
We would actually, we would guarantee the loan.
We could guarantee the payment.
Right. I thought that they didn't want to own it. I thought they wanted to lease it.
They didn't care which way. They did. They couldn't buy, they couldn't get a loan for it. They could only get a lease.
Hey, Heather, they had to put the money up front, cover the whole, whole thing. And the lease is going to be a third party. So they would pay it off.
Do we know whether they would be happy with either five or seven? Which of the two?
Well, they wouldn't care because we're paying.
Okay. Bill?
I just wonder, has anybody asked these fire companies for justification of why they need another?
Yes, the supervisors did.
We ask that, we ask that every time one of the two fire companies comes into our...
Okay.
And we...
Good.
We, I don't know that we have ever denied them. We may have modified what they wanted, but ever so slightly.
Longwood services three or four other municipalities. Have they gone to those?
I understand they have.
They told us that they went, that they're, that they need two trucks, that they would order at the end of next year, and that they've gone to the Longwood Foundation and the other municipalities to pay for the cost of another truck, and they've come to Kennet to pay for one truck.
Okay.
Can I ask, I'm sorry, I'm trying to remember the details of it. Typically, when you do a lease, you don't have money up front. You're just, you're renting, long-term rent.
You have to get some sort of deposit.
And, and so we were going to purchase it, even though we get a lower interest rate, we had to put some money up front.
Yes.
And we'd be putting the money up front.
Correct.
Has the Business Committee?
Not yet. I'm going to send that to them next. I was just telling you guys what I found out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Brushing through our agenda.
Well, I have one more thing. I've talked to Bob Johnson about the Marshall Bridge stabilization project. Last month, we discussed it and said we will probably try, he thought we would try to, Roger, don't laugh, we would try to get the project done this year. In talking with him, though, he still thought we would be able to possibly start it this year, but it concerned me that we will be starting it and stopping. So we are going to start the whole project in the spring, which makes more sense.
Makes sense.
Well, while they're getting set up, can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
In the press and political things, we keep hearing about $9 million we have. Some say it's good, some say it's not good. And I get kind of tired of listening to all this. But actually, the question about our money started five or six months ago, when we said, what are we going to do with the money? And there were some major projects we were going to list that were probably, what everybody's thinking, were above and beyond what we could normally afford with our yearly budgets. And we, and I asked the same question. Where is the list, time-wise and money-wise?
Well...
Where is it?
We have created a list. We've worked with these two gentlemen right there. One's trying to get away from the question.
Go back.
And they, they are pretty close, I believe, to finalizing our capital budget that we will work with during our budget...
A long-term capital budget for how long?
Out 20, well, the list, the capital budget that I had initially created was out 20 years. And so we hope to have that ready to be presented when we present the 2014 budget in November.
You probably also read that there's another municipality in this general area that I think they either reduced the open space tax that they voted in or eliminated on a temporary basis until it gets worked down to some level that they, their residents could accept.
Yes, I did read that.
Are there any other comments?
John?
John?
I was trying to display a graphic, but it doesn't look like it's working.
Picture the wall.
So let me just explain this. I was approached by Chester County Planning Transportation. And this, this whole subject is regional trails. And it, it goes back two years when Kennet was asked to become involved with the Borough of Kennet Square and New Garden Township to consider a trail from the west side of Kennet along Cypress to the New Garden Shopping Center. At that time, we had a few meetings with those folks, but it was really being spearheaded by a group out of the borough. There was a presentation here by Chester County Planning, and the slide I have there is, and I think you all have copies of it, is the material that was proposed back at that time. Just this week, I've been recontacted by Chester County Planning because they now want to pursue this more aggressively. Again, it's a combination of Kennet Township, the Borough of Kennet Square, and New Garden Township to construct some sort of trail along the Cypress Street. It's not what you would call scenic trail, but it's more a commute, what I call a commuter trail.
Just sidewalk, really?
Well, it could be a sidewalk. It could be an off-the-road trail. And, you know, you could make it more attractive by building a bridge over the Red Clay Creek and all this kind of stuff. Quite, you'd have to acquire more land. But in any case, the reason they came back to Kennet Township, Kennet Township is viewed as a leader, I think, in this area for doing trails. And particularly, the experience that we have in Gilmore, they required whether Gilmore could assist them, this whole group, three townships, three municipalities, in coming up with high-spot estimates and scopes, and perhaps follow-through for grant applications. This is with DVR PC. They will have a grant window open in the fall. So I've communicated with Bob Johnston on this. I believe it's something that they are very good at and something that they would like to do. And my proposal, I just wanted to pass it by you to get permission, is to have Gilmore, and they may even do it just as cost of business. They may not charge anything. But I want them to develop a cost proposal that we can share with the Borough of Kennet Square and New Garden and Kennet to do those two things. One, come up with scope, high-spot estimate, and as a second phase, prepare a grant application. to do those two things, one, come up with scope, high-spot estimate, and as a second phase, prepare a grant application. So I just want the cost to do that, so. Again, I, it's a regional trails type thing, it's been worked on for the last two years. They've turned to Kennet as a leader in this area, so I, I thought it was a reasonable thing, and would like to have Bob Johnston come in with those other groups at your October 21st meeting, and present whatever kind of proposal around the total cost, and then let these municipalities decide whether they wanna support it or not. Um, quick comment, I had no idea John was gonna talk about this, but the last inter-generation meeting, it was held at the Kennet Senior Center, this subject came up, and my understanding, there is a Borough Council that are interested in this. The borough itself did a walk, a walk, a feasibility walk of Cypress Street for sidewalks. They just wanted a group of us who walked there, we just walked it to see what the challenges were, and where the improvements got to come from, and how traffic was. Part of that study, which was very late and a dead way of doing it, created a lot of interest by the borough, my understanding, from this meeting, to approach, to be a part of what he's talking about, extending it out to New Garden, because there's a lot of foot traffic that right now is using the railway as a way of doing it, as well as endanger themselves along Cypress. So I'm just saying, there is a community support for that idea.
All right. Do you, supervisors have any comments to make on this, should we give them a go-ahead?
Well, the, you may not recall, but back in early 2012, Joan Holliday came in and talked about this, and I've been in touch with Joan ever since about it, she's working through the borough. There was a recent meeting that Joan hosted with New Garden Township, which unfortunately had a conflict, and ultimately could not be at that meeting, it was last month. But I'm very much involved in my concern about this, and intend to stay involved with it, so I'm going to be involved. I certainly support the idea of the Cypress Street walk. From everything that I've heard about it, it makes absolutely good, if not eminent good, sense. It doesn't make any sense to have little ladies and little children walking along Cypress Street with, with tractor trailers going by. So I'm, I'm gonna stay with it, and the fact that John's involved is certainly more the merrier.
So they're gonna come on, I'm sorry, at the October 21st meeting?
That's, that's what I would like to arrange, and I'll work with Bob on that. Just comment to Scott, that Joan Holliday is the one that asked me for an opinion on Gilmore.
That's, who's leading the air generation, so she's all over the place with this, which is good, yes, isn't it? But I would also recommend we consider, before we start throwing our money at it, we bring in the business community that would be benefited by this, such as Mike Pia's Development, you know, Magnolia, what he's called, Magnolia's complex. But there's also businesses along that way that may wanna see a better way forward for people to go across their property. They might have a minor interest, and it might not be retail.
All to be taken into account.
Right.
That's fine, perfect, okay. I guess you have our, our, the sense of the supervisors on this, okay. Are there any other questions, we're gonna have to leave here.
I just have one appeal to the board, if you're available for the next hour. We have a key development, making a proposal tonight for 164 apartment units before the planning commission.
Yeah, that is proper.
Correct. So if you got, if you can stay, that would be maybe good to hear.
Okay, I move we adjourn, all in favor? We are adjourned.